I was wanting to do.
All right. I've been needing it on the Friday morning. How y'all doing?
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, five thirty P M. Roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Public hearing none. Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, five thirty P M. Roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
And Councilman Wells.
At this time, I'll ask Pastor Matthews if he would come up and open us up with our prayer for tonight.
Our precious Father God, we thank you. Thank you for your love and kindness and tender mercy. We ask you to be with us on tonight as we conduct the business affairs of this city. Lord, be with our mayor, be with our council, all those in attendance. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All veterans and active military, please render a proper salute for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve our minutes of our October eleventh, twenty two, twenty twenty two meeting?
So move.
Second. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Presentations, the first presentation is from the five K Purple Run.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
And attendees. My name is Janine Soshe. I live at one three two two zero East Coles Creek Loop, Hammond, Louisiana. I want to thank you for adding us to your agenda tonight. I'm here to formally invite the members of the Hammond City Council, the attendees here today, as well as the City of Hammond, to the Second Annual Five K Purple Run. I knew this would happen. This run is to bring awareness to domestic violence in Hammond and Tangahoe Parish. Our main goal for this event is to raise donations for SAFE, which is Southeast Advocates for Family Empowerment, Hammond's only domestic violence advocacy. The event will be held this Saturday, October twenty ninth, at Kate Square Park, corner of Robert and Magnolia Streets. The event will begin at eight, and the five K run will start at eight thirty. In lieu of typical five K registration fees, we'll be accepting donations to support SAFE. We've been working hard this past year. I stood up here a year ago to enhance the Second Annual Five K with help from local support, including sponsorships from Mr. Gerald's sticker for the hot dogs and hamburgers, prepared by our official chef and committee member, Mr. Wayne Cooper. Callie Hines and the Creek Band will be performing live. We have a bounce house sponsored by Tallow House of Bounce. We will again have raffles throughout the day and a new silent auction for higher valued items. We're happy to be able to offer the private defense class again this year, sponsored by Frank Di Benedetto's Karate, which I think works perfectly. One hundred percent of the proceeds from the entire day go directly to SAFE. This event is all about giving back to SAFE so they can continue to do the good work it takes to combat the cycle of domestic violence in our community. We addressed the city council last year with our personal reason to pursue this mission, and that reason remains close to our hearts. And I'll repeat it this year. The night of October twenty second, my husband and I watched his law enforcement urgently pass our home and stopped at the curve of our loop. My husband was informed that they were responding to the close, to our close friend Heidi being shot by her husband. I remember my instant thoughts were that there must be a mistake. This isn't happening. A short time later, I watched as a silent ambulance passed my house to leave. No lights. They just passed by. That's when I knew she was gone. As most people do, I typed my emotions and feelings to my social media page, and there was one comment that was shared under my post, and I credit it to giving me the idea of initiating a five K specifically. The comment was from my husband, and he said, "I'll keep running the neighborhood for you," and that's because they both ran the neighborhood. They liked exercise. That's when I understood the reasons, I'm sorry. That's when I understood the answers to the questions I had. What can I do? I can play to my strengths by planning and initiating Community Five K because my friend loved to run. How can I help by advocating to end domestic violence as well as gain as much attention and economic support for SAFE as possible? They have the tools and the programs and the people, the know-how to properly help women and men in domestic violence situations. The only difference from now until, from then until now, is that because of the events we've had and the conversations we've had over the past year, a larger number of domestic violence survivors are breaking their silence and sharing their personal journey of triumph with me personally. The current social stigma that domestic violence is something to be ashamed of, is being challenged. People are speaking about it, and that's where the change begins. A very good friend of mine opened herself up to me about her triumph over domestic violence. She spent, she spent the majority of her life being violently abused, both within her childhood home, continuing to her adulthood, and at the hands of her husband. She was alone and terrified, in constant fear for her life and the lives of her children. After years of abuse and realizing that she was in a life or death situation, she took the difficult steps and was able to leave safely, protecting herself and her children. Another woman I have connected with over the last year literally rebuilt her life and her physical body after domestic violence broke her completely down. Her significant other horrifically physically and mentally abused her. He traumatized her children. And also, she too made the extremely hard decision to leave with her children. She now, she is now a physical fitness instructor and coach, and she excels at that. In doing this, they both broke the cycle. They made themselves examples to their children, proving to them that they are all worthy of a better, safe, and healthy life. I'll end with this. Statistics say that one in three people are directly affected by domestic violence, but I don't think that's true. In every conversation I've had over the last year, every single person has a story. Either it's their story or their relative's story. Only through communication, education, advocating, and bringing the community together in a show of unified awareness will we be able to show domestic violence has no room here. I didn't know my life would change when I met Heidi, and losing her would give a purpose. But we're doing great and powerful things in her name, and I hope to see you guys at the five K, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your courage and your heart.
Next presentation, code enforcement.
Good evening, Bobby. Yeah, I know one of my concerns were, I'm glad you came, Bobby. There's a couple houses still in, you know, in the district that were, you know, supposed to be getting demoed for a while now, and I didn't get a response back for a while, the last couple weeks about the three that I enquired about for this meeting. I didn't see it on here. So I wanted to see what the status was or why they weren't on this meeting.
Okay, that's why I'm here tonight.
Yeah.
Have a generated list of proposed demolitions by percentage and districts that may or may not come in a December meeting. We have to make sure that we're properly notifying ownership. That's, that's the main reason they're not on this meeting. We weren't able to get notices out to the owners in a timely manner to get the return, certified return receipt in order to properly notify them to attend. That being said, we want to, I understand according to the agenda, you wanted to give a report of any and all possible demolitions. So we have, have them by address, inclusive with the ones that we submitted two weeks ago as a list. Twenty seven oh seven Anderson, District Number Four. We did an assessment on it. It's approximately seventy percent damage, so it should come with no problem to recommend demolition. Fifteen oh eight Natchez Street, District Three. That's a home, eighty percent damage. Fifteen ten, excuse me, fifteen oh eight is a mobile home in the Mobile Home Park. Fifteen ten Natchez is a se, a single home adjacent to the Mobile Home Park, District Three, ninety four percent. Seven oh four Barnes, since the last meeting, that structure has totally collapsed and fallen to the ground, so we no longer have to present it as a demolition. My team has already prepared notices to cite them for trash and debris, so we won't have to submit it as a demolition. So that'll, that'll go away. Ten fifteen Blackburn is a mobile home, ninety percent damage. That's District Four. One zero one Perry Lane, District Three. That's a mobile home that's collapsed by a tree, ninety percent damage. One seventeen Perry Lane, District Three, eighty percent. Thirteen oh nine Harold, that's a mobile home. There's a percentage of eighty percent, District Three. Five oh three Second Avenue, District Three, house ninety eight percent. Six oh one Washington Avenue, the owners have repaired the roof on that structure, so it's no longer a concern for demolition. They put a new metal roof on that structure. That's District Three. Six oh seven North Holly Street, that's an old restaurant, District Number One. That's sixty five percent. Shouldn't have a problem getting that down as well. Five oh seven Holly, North Holly Street, the old Campbell Funeral Home, seventy five percent, District Number One. Four eleven East Michigan, District One, that's the one adjacent to the rear side of St. Paul Church, structural block building, eighty five percent. Six oh one Mooney Brick Home, fifty five percent burned structure. Number twelve White Drive, District Number Five, forty five percent damage. Three eleven Reed, District Three, a shed, seventy nine percent. Seven oh one, excuse me, seven eleven and a half Barnes, that was one of the ones in District Four concerned, seventy percent mobile home. One zero nine Reed is a mobile home, sixty percent damage. Four oh eight Crystal, storm damage. It's fifty five percent, District Number One. Thirteen eleven Harvey, mobile home, damaged by the storm, eighty percent damage. And fifteen oh five Harold, District Number Three, seventy five percent. The, the intent is to, after receipt of proper ownership, we'll take them worst-case scenarios, prioritize them accordingly. So we are, we're pushing hard to bring at least five or six to the December meeting.
I guess, I guess where my little frustration is, is that on Anderson, speaking about Anderson Street, that one has been around for a while now, a few years now. And, you know, it's been on there, and, you know, nothing changed. I don't think it would take that long to figure out the ownership on that, on that property. And I've been bringing it up, and it's been this month, this month, this month, and really, if I wouldn't have sent it in for you to attend this meeting, I asked you to attend this meeting and get an update. I sent an email last, you know, to Andre and copy you to it, just to check these three out, you know, in, in the district I knew about, not speaking about the other districts, but I'm familiar with the ones in, in my district. And I just, I just can't, I just, I don't understand what, what, why would it take that long? Is it just theory? You hope it just falls down, gets demolished enough to where it just falls like the other one on seven oh four Barnes? And we don't have, we don't have to put, I mean, I just don't understand what, what's taken so long. I know I've seen other ones that the city didn't own, they tore down and everything else pretty quickly, but the ones that are clearly a problem to the community, you know, and the ownership should be clear in three or four, or at least an update why. And then it was supposed to be coming on the eleventh meeting, didn't come, and now here we are. And so I just, I just hear always a lot of talking about the demolitions, but they don't come to us.
Okay. So in May of this year, we brought three. You all condemned them. In August, we brought five. You condemned them. So I think we're bringing them.
Yeah.
I don't see, I don't like to use exclusive words like never and always.
Well, so, so what, tell me the status then about the ones that might add, you know, on Anderson, that one there, is that one?
Twenty seven oh seven?
Yeah. Is that one confirmed? Cause I've been talking about that one with you for about three years, since I've been in office, I've been bringing it up to you, so that's.
Finally reached the, the appropriate percentage of fifty percent or more.
Okay.
Again, as I explained to you all with concerns of demolition, you may, you may pass an area, and aesthetically, it may look like it's deteriorated. But once we do the assessment of structural support of the structure, it may or may not qualify.
So you're saying that one was not in the condition to be torn down up until a couple months ago?
Few months ago, correct.
Correct.
With rain deterioration and structural.
I, I just, you know, I, I don't know. I find it hard to believe in that. I mean, it sounds good up there, but I don't want to go back and forth with you, but that, that house has been an issue, and it's, it's been, it's been rough for, for many years. So, I mean, that one right there, and then the other one, what was the reason with that one? Now that it's completely demoed, it's fallen in on seven eleven, I think it was, or seven oh four, no, seven oh four. So why did that one sit there until it fell?
Well, it had a tree that hit it. It couldn't sustain a fall of a tree, so it fell.
Cause I mean, it's, it's, I say, well, oh, I, I want to see a better process with this because I look at them, I see them, and it sounds good up here about, oh, well, it's not hitting this percentage or that percentage, but that, that, they should have been, it should have been long, long before now, and hopefully we can work on a better policy or process with this because those properties, there was, they've been, they should have been done, and I mean.
Councilman, you remember last year or year before, I asked you if you would, if you would write with me?
Yeah.
And I could show you the process, and you've never, never wrote.
I never can get you on the phone real, a lot of times. It's hard to get you. It's hard, and I hear that from my constituents as well, too. I have a lady, you know, saying they've been trying to get, just two weeks. There's one on Brandy Lane, the front of Brandy Lane. They've been calling me, no, Lato Lane, I'm sorry. And they said they, you can't get a call back from you.
I've spoken with a couple people over there, Anthony Lato.
Yeah, Mr. Tony said it goes several weeks and don't ever get a call back. So you may have called him back today. Last week, I think Friday, I think I seen him, he said, "He ain't got a call back from you." So I was just repeating what he's told me. I'm not saying you did or not, but those are the things I'd like to see improvement on. I mean, that house there, I mean, are they, do you got any plans to check back in? Are they going to clean that up a little bit, or?
We've reported, the mayor's office got a call as well, reported to the concerned citizens. He's not the only one that's concerned. We had several people on that street that I've spoken with. And sometimes people don't like the answer they get, so they, they'll call you all and suggest that they can't get the results that they want. But the house is not structurally damaged. It had a portion of the rear of the house that was damaged by a tree, which puts it at about thirty percent damage. The owner of the house tore down the front porch, and supposedly going to have that part removed completely from the, from the location. But he's working on a timeframe with his insurance company. I think we mentioned that at the last meeting, and you were asking about confirming whether or not the insurance company have, has validity with whether or not the owner is waiting for the report of the insurance.
Well, I agree with you on that one. I don't, I don't think it needs to be toward that. Well, it could or could not be, but it doesn't look like it's demolition percentage. But it does need to be secured some way, cause I think that's another complaint from the community over there is that, you know, the in and out of whatever, it just, things aren't secured. So I mean, if he can at least get everything secured while he's working on it or going to work on it, I mean, I think that would help them out there a little bit. Do we have any rules, regulations on books about securing the property?
Well, we secure them. Violators, they have a, they have a tendency there to know how to break and enter, and that becomes a police matter to monitor. Should someone call, and the police would come over and
Yeah.
arrest them for trespassing. That's not, that's not a code enforcement monitoring part to keep, you know, to keep it secure. We secure it, and someone removes the boards or, you know, kick the door back in. It's, you know, you gotta keep in mind, too, that we're working with a pretty high volume. So we can't monitor all of the locations all the time.
No, but, you know, those, those are my concerns, and I mean, I just think they've been hanging around a good bit, a good while, and, you know, I mean, at, at some point, you gotta look at it, and something's not right, and it, and it needs to get improved because it wouldn't, y'all, you wouldn't have been here tonight if I wouldn't have asked for you, asked you if you would be able to attend and give us a status update. And it'd have been another year from now. We'd have still been waiting on, on the houses or certain ones. I mean, some get, some get removed pretty quickly, and then others, you know, just seem like they keep hanging around. And, and the ownership shouldn't take three years to figure out if they own it or not, and sometimes y'all.
Some pretty strong timeframes, Councilman, a year, three years.
Yeah, I mean.
Right ownership.
I mean, it, it shouldn't take that long. I mean, I mean, one, y'all, y'all tore it down real quick, and it wasn't the right owner. So I mean.
This particular owner is going to rebuild his house. He had a, a tree go in his house in Oak Creek where he lives.
I'm talking about Anderson. That's what I'm talking about, Anderson. They're not rebuilding that. You're talking, you're talking about Lato, I'm sure. I'm not talking about that anymore. I'm talking about Anderson, the one that's clearly.
Okay.
I just discussed that with him. I don't know if you didn't pay attention, but I said it didn't need to be demoed. It just needed to be secured a little bit right now because it's, it's left open, and they have animals, rodents, and everything else, and neighbors are complaining about it, so, and they couldn't get a call back from code enforcement for a couple of weeks. So that's what I was addressing tonight.
I'll share myself.
I think I actually talked to you, Mayor, about it, too, and I think you said it was a problem with the code enforcement issue.
I talked to Mr. Lato.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not your fault, Bobby. I think it's administrative issue. You've been here for a long time, and it seems like it's continuing to go on like this, but I appreciate your comment.
If you don't mind, share your constituents. Our, our cell phones are public, and if I'm doing my job, I'm not in the office. If I'm, if I'm sitting, if I'm able to return phone calls minute by minute, then that means I'm not out citing stuff. I mean, I'm not doing inspections. So share my cell, share my cell with constituents, especially if they call you direct instead of having a problem reaching us. Just, just share the cell.
Bobby, how many, how many homes do you have on your watch list, do you know?
This is, what I did tonight was after, after the request to attend, this is, this is the group that we're actually, we took a citywide panning and looked at realistically what's probable for demolition and the ones that are not. We didn't want to put that on this list because what happens when we put a list together, there's an assumption that it's going to be torn down, even if it's being monitored for a year or two years. It's, and that's, we get blamed for letting it sit for two years because we put it on a list that wasn't ready. And so this is why we've assessed the properties and given you percentages so that moving forward, you'll only be concerned about the ones that are absolute and not probable. I think it's probably best to do it that way. So we're talking the same language, so we're not assuming that something's going to be torn down. It's not. So in this list that I presented tonight, roughly twenty, twenty-five locations. And we did have the grass cut over on, on Anderson's meanwhile, until we can get the structures down.
And I think they're still having issues with buggies, cart buggies being, being left over there. I don't know if, if we need to figure out some, some which way to try to address that either. The owner of the property, obviously not taking care of their property right now, so it's starting to pile up again over there with, with buggies. So that was another, some more messages I was receiving earlier today about that.
We can't monitor those. We just, if trash and debris is on a piece of property, that owner is obviously responsible. So we do our same process of notifications to the owner, give them opportunity after ten days of receipt of certified mail to clear it out, and if they don't, we'll hire and, and bill the owner.
Yeah.
Even if it's not the owner's fault that it's there, cause
Yeah.
the house is vacant, so I know it's not the owner that's placing it.
Still got to maintain a property, so, yeah, and, or maybe even call the, contact a grocery store or whatnot to let them know where their buggies are. I'm sure they'd like them back.
We have. They, they're not interested. They write them off as an insurance claim.
How you doing, Bobby?
Pretty good.
Finished now?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah. It's amazing that you set up here, said about twenty-five houses that maybe can't locate the people, looking for the people. And I say this here, there's some more time, Sam, you just lost. I don't know if you noticed that or not, cause I don't think you got a clear answer on what you asked for. Steve, the only one got a clear answer, and I think that was twenty-five houses after he gave a speech. Started just, you know, started saying twenty-four, twenty-five houses. And I'm gonna say this here. Almost four years we've been up here. I don't ask for no house to be torn down. What the people ask me for, that's what I ask you for. You know, they say Devon, Councilman Well, whatever, we need this house towed down, this house this, this house that. But you did a lot of talking, but the people come to us. They call you, they call me, and they called all those. But it's like a circle. Every time you come up here, and it's, it's been going on too long, you know? And I notice, even with me, when it, when it's come down, it's tearing down the houses now, we come up with a lot of rules and regulations, you know? Removing the concrete, we know what I always talked about, putting dirt in there. So when you tear down a structure, if another man want to come buy their lot or whatever, they don't have all that to deal with because the city, which is the taxpayers' money, is actually paying for these lots. And this is what I learned today, Tangpo Parish. And this is what I learned today, Trench Pole Parish, uh, it's still, it's still paper been going around. And this is what people don't understand. And I said, I think the city is in a fix now, because the city done tore down a house on East Church Street. If I'm not mistaken, let me give you the address. Thank you, eight eleven East Charles Street, over there by Tony Perkins.
It should, it should have been eight thirteen, it's the one that you all condemned.
Okay.
One that you all condemned.
Yeah, eight thirteen. And this is the funny part about it. This sheet I have, this is a public sheet. It's one of the things the city should have been talking about. These people will come on your private property, remove stumps, trees, debris, whatever you have. And I'm saying, it's amazing, I got this information today, went to the library and got the application, no charge. It, it, it's free. And I'm saying, I've been talking about debris on Brent Street. Now, all of a sudden, the mayor done did, uh, four hundred feet away from the road and stuff. He tell me this here, what, last week, week four last. And now, I found out that that's all I got to do is call this company, and they'll come move the debris for free. And I'm saying, here you done sit here and towed down a house down, wish the tree done fell, you know? I hear you talk about the storm, uh, out of what, almost a year now, a year and a couple of months. These, the sheets that should have been given out, passed in the mail for every homeowner in Hammond to know they can get all this stuff removed for free. Even if you got insurance, they still will remove this stuff. And it took me a year, a year to find this out, that this is all I need. And I'm saying, it's amazing that if we get these to the people, the city will save money. You don't have to send no letters out, just send this out. That's all we have to do. And I'm saying, Sam sitting up here talking to you, and did you get a straight answer, Sam?
Not, not really.
Yeah, well, you, have you ever got a straight answer?
No, no.
And, and that's what I'm saying, man. When the people call, I know it's funny, but you know?
Yeah, councilman, you got a straight answer. He wanted me to give a report of the.
Give, give a report. And you know what all you had to do, real stuff? I don't think the other councilmen really worried about it. Just give a report of what's going on in his area and tell him the process. But see, if we'd have did all this in the beginning, when we first got here, and here it is, coming to the end of the four years, and we still going through the same step, you know? We can't find this, we can't find that. We can find anything we want. Now, it's better now than ever before, because guess what? You can go on the computer and find out where this person stayed, where that person stayed. And you got to, we have a lawyer here, so I'm quite sure Mr. Andre will do whatever it takes. But these letters that, that you've been playing with us with and stuff, you know, it's sad that my neighbor telling me about a house need to be tore down, and we can't locate the people. But it's funny that you can find houses three hundred feet from my house to be tore down, not on the main street. And I laugh, and I saw it funny, because my neighbors had no issue with tearing them down, none whatsoever. But the ones that need to be tore down, that the people complaining about, we can't get them tore down sixty percent, seventy percent. Hell, we don't know what percent. The people talk about the houses. It's not the councilmen's talking about the houses. You know, if the people tell me about a house, I'm going to call you, I'm going to tell you. I'm thinking I'd have done my job. But apparently, I didn't do my job when they called me. The next year, well, Councilman Wells, the house still up? Well, he said sixty percent. Councilman Wells, the house still up? This, now, I'm counting the whole year before they called me back. Well, he said, uh, sixty percent. Well, Councilman Wells, a hundred percent still being the same, and we going in the year one, year two, year three. And when you're talking, see, the people in the audience don't really know what's going on. We know what's going on, we're not getting the houses towed down, but by the airport, they needed three houses towed down that couldn't nobody find unless you was in a helicopter, or airplane, you can see the old houses. Didn't nobody know houses was there. They were towed down with no issue whatsoever.
Those were on City of Hammond property.
I, yes, I.
And just so that we're clear, on April twenty-third at six fifty in the morning, I sent out that very program to the entire city council, along with a whole bunch of city workers and staff to help get the word out about that brand-new program. We had just gotten the information from the parish. This is a FEMA-related program. It's FEMA for private property debris removal. There are specific requirements that individuals have to meet in order to qualify. But that's everything that was sent out to all the councilmen, yourself included, on April twenty-third.
Okay, Ms. Lacy, thank you for that, Ms. Lacy.
I just wanted you.
No, 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 for one thing, Ms. Lacy, Ms. Lacy. It should have been sent out three times, four times, because you know what? The city done tore down a house already, or a tree done fell from the storm. And so, that could have been money the city didn't have to waste. That's what I'm saying. And then, I'm hearing what Sam talking about trees, this and that. So, we don't have to sit here and try to make me out of a liar, you know? Let's just sit here and get it to the people again. You know, when I get my water bill one time, honestly, I'm going to go pay it, because I'm scared my water going to get cut off. But a lot of people, they just need somebody. And I went through my neighborhood today. I went to the library today and got some application, because guess what? They don't know now that they can get the stump removed. They don't know now that they can get the tree removed out their backyard. I didn't know. Information come in front of me all the time, but in the meantime, if you keep hitting me with it, okay, I'm going to wake up. But we was talking about houses, but I'm saying, they can get all the debris moved out their yards for free. That's all I'm saying. You know, Bobby, I don't know, the administration, you, we have to do a better job in getting the houses tore down. It's not coming from the councilman, it's coming from the constituents complaining about the houses. That's all I'm saying. We have to do a better job, not just you.
I just want you to, to know that the new procedure for notifying any and all owners came from this council. When you brought some contractors in to suggest that we weren't doing our bidding process correctly, that's when all of this was changed. We were expediting the process. And now, we're going through a lengthy process to confirm ownership with multiple owners.
To add dirt and remove the concrete? So, y'all wasn't removing the concrete, I mean, see?
No, the process of notification.
No, no, but no, 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 no. I just said add dirt when they remove the concrete, remove the concrete. So, when you see a lot, a lot will be clean where somebody can cut it. That's all I asked for. So, lengthy, after the contractor finished working? But you're doing good.
We can go back and look at the minutes, it was there pretty.
Just wanted to, want to ask.
I know everything, I put on there.
So, recapping the Anderson, the Barnes, and other Barnes, when, when is that coming to us?
The Barnes, seven oh four is no longer on there. It was crushed by a tree, so it's no longer an issue. You have seven eleven Barnes that's coming. That's the only Barnes address that you have on there.
So, y'all take, y'all taking the, the debris that's left?
For debris.
Yeah, okay.
Trash and debris.
Okay. And then, the other one, the seven oh four Barnes and Anderson, when is Anderson coming to us?
We're going to try to confirm ownership again and hopefully get them to you for December. That would allow thirty days of notice to the owners. We, we printed out all the ownerships today.
Okay.
So, I don't, I don't want you to feel like, all of, the reason I'm saying this is, all of the locations will not be on there. We're, we're selecting them based on the worst-case scenarios and making sure, and you're, you're concerned about the twenty-seven oh seven, so certainly, that'll be one of the ones we will submit.
Okay, good, yeah.
I don't want to flood you all with twenty-five locations at one meeting.
Well, no, I mean, that one, I've been talking about that one for a while, because the constituent's been asking about that one since I've been in office, and it's been, been, Ms. Golden, are you in here? That, that, uh, the house on Anderson, has it, has it changed any in the last three years? Or has it been pretty much as rough as it has been now for the last three years? Okay, I ju, I just wanted to make sure, okay? So, I just.
She's not a professional inspector.
No, I know, but, I mean, she lives across the street from it, so, I mean, she's been.
She can't confirm, but I can confirm with structural damage.
But, but anyway, I just wanted to. Yes, ma'am, you can come back, you can come to the mic, Ms. Golden. Excuse me. Yeah, you can state your address, yeah.
Oh, two eight hundred Anderson Street.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, the concern with us is it houses a lot of drug traffic. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, they got it boarded up, and it's, it's been, uh, I mean, it looks bad on a, on a commu, in the community as well, but we see a lot of drug traffic. And a lot of times, I've gotten up at night, and I see people going, you know, driving back there, just doing whatever. So, it's just unsafe for us. That's, that was my main concern.
And it's been like that for several years, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just want to pre, thank you, Ms. Golden.
So, now that we know that these houses housing drug activities, now it seem like we can get the law enforcement involved in it now. Because the houses that we talk about, we're not just talking, I'm just going by what the neighbors say, that the activities going on, uh, the animals, the rats, all this here snakes. This is what goes on in the neighborhood, Bobby. I know you don't have this in your neighborhood, but this is what goes on in the neighborhood where these houses at. And I'm not a professional, but one day, look like we're going to have to find a professional to know what to do to get these houses towed down.
And Andre, whenever I sent that email to you and Bobby, have y'all confirmed? Have you confirmed that ownership of that property? Or is it something new came up in the last couple, couple of weeks that has changed ownership?
It's, uh, not on my desk.
Okay, so it's not on your desk, okay. So, you hadn't checked or confirmed anything with that?
I don't have, I don't have the names to start from, locations. I'm just waiting to hear back to, to jump on title searches for owners.
So, does it come to you, or do they do everything in-house, and then they only come to you whenever there's a problem?
I get it when they're requesting me to verify or double-check ownership or do something along that.
Okay, and you have, so when I sent that email, nothing was sent to you from off of the verified ownership of that house on Anderson?
Not yet.
Okay, so it hadn't, okay, I just wanted to clarify that, so it hadn't been checked.
So, that mean in December, they won't be on the list?
No.
Because it takes thirty days.
And then, that's the problem. You know, the problem is, I don't, you know, is, it looks, it sounds good up here, but it's not being done. So, thank you.
Final adoption of ordinance, none. Introduction of ordinance is set for public hearing.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Haven LaFrance owner to allow for a mobile home located at three six zero five Delia Randall Road. Her survey by Gilbert Sullivan. RLS dated three one seven eight, zoned RM dash two, Z dash two zero two two dash zero nine dash zero zero one one one. Recommended approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, Lacy Landrum.
This is our standard request to police a mobile home in an area that is not already designated for mobile homes. This is on the very northern section of the City of Hammond in Councilman Leon's District, District Five. The zoning is currently residential, and it has, on the west side, it's actually vacant and outside of the city limits. On the north side is vacant land, on the south side is vacant land. They're both wooded structures and areas. And then, on the east side is multifamily. Both duplexes and triplexes are to the east side of this lot. Mr. LaFrance is in the audience tonight to answer any questions. This was recommended for approval by unanimous vote from the zoning commission.
Can you tell me, uh, can you tell me if there was any property, surrounding property owners that were opposed to this?
Yes, as stated here, on the very bottom of the staff report, you'll see that Dawn Zarangue, and I apologize if I mispronounced that name, the adjacent property owner at one fifteen Mallard Drive and one seventeen Mallard Drive, he explained that he was, um, they're representing the property owners of those duplexes and triplexes.
And this will go to public hearing, correct?
That's correct. If introduced tonight, it would go to public hearing at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from anyone from the council?
Haven LaFrance, three six oh five Delia Randall Road. I was wondering if I can get this table to the next, uh, meeting?
He said you wanted to get it tabled, huh? Yeah, so, Andre, how would he do that?
Well, if he makes that request of the council, he wants to table it, the council can vote to table it if he's making that request.
Second.
I'm just making sure he understands.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, reach, clear.
You're requesting that it be tabled, France? Motion and second on the floor.
I made the motion, Steve second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Introduction number two.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve a rezoning request by RE Three Properties LLC owner to rezone lots sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-two of Block Three of Vicaro Park subdivision, located at fourteen oh nine West Church Street from RM dash two to MX dash C, Z dash two zero two two dash zero nine dash zero zero one one two. Recommended approval by the zoning commission, Lacy Landrum.
This was, uh, recommended unanimously for approval. It's actually a lot that is surrounded by other parcels that are all zoned the same way to mixed commercial. So, it would be changing this one lot that's kind of just an island unto itself to match the zoning of the rest of the corridor. Um, you can see that in your map, showing the zoning later. This is Church Street, and this does adhere to the future land use map for having that corridor be all mixed-use commercial.
This has an application linked that is not this property.
Right. Someone was mixed up.
I'm not in charge of the technical. Seven twelve Magazine Street is the application, but all the other things match this.
I can bring this if you need it.
We need to update that.
Yeah, this is basically, I'll, I'll give a little more description then. Across the street from this property is the former Old School Uniform Shop, the big red building, um, there. And, uh, this is right on the corner of Carter Street and West Church Street. Um, it is to the, the property to the east of it is a single-family home. The property to the south of it is also a single-family home. The property to the west of it is a single-family home. However, those properties all along Church Street, even though they are single-family homes as they currently happen, are all zoned mixed commercial. The idea is to have that become a corridor that could have an, a juxtaposition of both business and residential going forward. Uh, the property to the northwest is duplexes, multifamily. And then, again, the one just to the north of it is the Old School House, that business right there.
And we will make sure that you get, uh, the updated. I don't know if the packets, did the packets get emailed or no? Yes, they were emailed. Okay. Just need to make sure that the correct. And I'll be happy to pass this around.
Ms. Lacy, what did the board do?
The commission had a unanimous vote in favor of the rezoning.
Okay.
And I think that was mainly because it does fit with the future land use map, and it fits with all that other zoning in that same area. So, it's like you're making the one thing that's kind of sticking out, you're making it the same for everything right there.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, the map that you have here is for off of MC Moore, and the application is for the other one. So, we just need to make sure we get the right things hyperlinked, because these are not correct. Yeah, yeah, and the, what Ms. Lisa shared with us has that as well, so, um, just need to get that fixed.
Any other questions to come in from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at five thirty.
Resolutions, resolution number one.
A resolution to approve the Living Room LLC located at eighteen oh one Nashville Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, to obtain a permit to sell on-premise high-low alcohol. The owner is Terry Clemmons LLC, Casey Dagel.
Good afternoon. Um, I got a phone call earlier this morning from Ms. Clemmons since she had a family emergency and she wouldn't be able to make it here tonight. So she asked us to table this approval until the next meeting when she can be present.
Okay. Thank you. Make, make a motion to table? Do we, has it withdrawn or tabled or what?
She just asked to table it until next meeting when she could be here to give her side.
Andre, what we doing is still case.
That's, it's up to the council. I mean, typically you would want to hear from the owner.
And the owner's not.
The owner's not here. So it's really up to the council. I mean, again, historically, you, you want the owner here to be available to answer questions. If she's not here, she's, because of a, a family emergency, then, and she's asking the council to table.
If there's no, if there's no second, it's just.
I make a motion to table.
Well, uh, let's see, Councilman Divitorio made a motion, so you're.
I second, yeah.
And I think there are people here to speak. Should we not hear from them?
We need to let them speak then. If anyone, uh, wants to speak on an item, they, they'll, should be able to.
Thank you. Um, my name is Pat McAluso. Uh, address is twelve hundred Lafitte Drive, Unit One. Um, I am the very close neighbor of this property. My driveway is maybe less than three hundred feet from the, uh, from the, the business. Uh, it was originally built as a restaurant. It is, and conforms to the B-two zoning that, uh, has been designated for that area. And since that building was built, the area around it was and has continued to be a highly dense residential area. The idea of having a barroom, basically, uh, in my backyard, you know, it just takes my property values down, annoys us, you know, with the noise. And at night, when they crank up those music machines, it can literally shake the windows. Uh, I don't think that the, I think the, even the variance says that, uh, it can't be more than forty-five decibels. And you can go out there any night they have those things going and I guarantee you it's more than forty-five decibels. But also, I'm a little concerned because there's been reports of some firearm activity around the business. And I don't know whether the council is aware of that or whether it's been investigated. But I do think that before anything is decided on this property, that it should be investigated. I really, um, I, I'm, I'm happy to have this postponed. This, you know, I think we need more public input on it. Uh, but I really think that we need to take in consideration that it is a highly dense residential area. It's going to be adversely affected by the noise, the traffic, and just all the things that come along with serving alcohol in a venue such as this. That's really all I have to say, and thank you.
Hi. My name's Anna File and I live at twelve hundred Lafitte Drive, Unit Number Two. So I'm right next door to Ms. Pat. And, um, I just want to second what she says. We, a very residential area. And when, um, it's very disturbing at night when they turn on their music and it goes on till two AM. And it comes into your house. And we've put in new windows in our place to try to help, um, combat that. And, uh, to no avail. So, um, in addition to the, um, the close proximity as it, it is to the university, it's within walking distance and we had that problem when we had the buzz there. And so, um, to avoid another situation like that, I would really like to see this, um, you know, not pass to let them, you know, increase the activity that's happening. There's already too much going on. So, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Your name?
Babin, sixteen oh four Nashville Avenue.
What's your name again, sir?
Matt Babin. I've lived on Nashville Avenue for seventeen years now. My family, neighbors, have dealt with the negative impact of clubs and bars at the end of that street since we've lived there. And I'm sure my neighbors feel the same way. The living room is not going to be any different than what we've dealt with in the past. Since opening last year, there's been several complaints, many complaints, loud music, cars racing down the street and intersecting streets. Just like years ago when those other bars were operating. In two thousand and nine, three kids lost their lives. To a drunk driver leaving one of those bars. Few years later, they closed down and to a relief to the whole neighborhood, we didn't have to deal with it anymore. For the sake of our families, for our friends in our neighborhood, I ask you not to approve this permit.
Does anyone else come in?
I'm Jerry Corjean, fourteen ten Nashville. I live down the street and I concur exactly what is going on. And we had this when I served in your place with the barroom down the street. The gentleman said it right. Three people were killed by a drunk driver that came from the bar. The noise has, the, the building is not insulated well enough to handle the music, the loud music, and it really needs not to be done again. Thank you.
This establishment has been a problem since day one. I have received calls every weekend, every night. It's, it's just not, it's just not where it needs to be. And it doesn't need to be there. Uh, we've had shootings there. We've had constant police there. Uh, this is an establishment that just does not need to be there. I'll make a secondary motion to deny permit.
I think the motion on the table was a table.
Secondary motion.
And it was.
Secondary motion will overrule that motion.
I'm saying that there was a motion and it was a second on the table. That's all, that's all I was saying, ain't that Andre?
Yeah, but there's a substitute motion.
Okay.
So the substitute motion would get voted on.
Okay.
If there's a second.
Okay.
If there's a second.
Second.
All right, so now, now what's on the table is a substitute motion to deny the permit?
That is correct.
So now you can entertain any discussion on that item.
Now, Andre, legally speaking, any legally, any, does, can the city be sued any which way for, uh, uh, somebody asking some, uh, to withdraw or table a topic not here and deny it or anything that way? I mean.
Well, she doesn't have a permit, so it's not a permit that's revoked. So conceivably, she could come back for a permit. And, and, um, I did send a letter to Ms. Clemmons back in September because there were complaints about an incident at that location. And, um, in fairness to her, she did call me back yesterday. We swapped calls back, and so I've not spoken with her to ask her some information that is pertinent and, uh, and could be a violation. But it, I'm not going to go there because I want to get her information about, uh, what happened at that incident on September seventeenth. So there certainly has been some question raised about, about the location. And you can take all of that into consideration, uh, complaints, uh, effect on the neighborhood, um, when you determine if a alcohol permit's appropriate.
So, so did she withdraw it or did she table it?
She asked me to table, to table it to next meeting when she was here to give her side.
And this is District Five, and I'll be asking to deny it.
So, Andre, which, which one we voting on?
Voting on the, the substitute motion, which is to deny the permit. Depending, you know, if that, if that passes, then it's over. If it doesn't pass, then you go back to the original motion.
So are we ready to vote on this? So we had a motion by Councilman Leon and then a second by Councilwoman Gonzalez for substitute.
There's a substitute motion to deny the permit.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Astain.
But, uh, I, I do want to make a comment though now that I'm glad everybody's aware of the bars having issues because it's not only where y'all are at, it's downtown Hammond. There's a lot of gun shootings downtown Hammond and it comes from the bars. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that in here. And I'm glad y'all came here tonight because it's not just bars over there, it's bars downtown Hammond. And I don't hear a lot of talking about it. So there's a lot of problems, twenty-one shots, underage drinking. You know, that all hit the knifeyber, I, you know, so I want to make sure that the community is aware of all bars and, and, and all the crimes and all the gun shooting, what they bringing into the city of Hammond. So I just want to make that clear that I hope everybody wakes up and pays attention to what's going on and how dangerous it is. I come out my office downtown Hammond, got to pick up beer bottles, got to pick up beer cups all over because they're all scattered all over the place. Gunshots, everything else. Law enforcement jammed up downtown protecting the bars and the people, not in the communities because they gotta worry about the bars. So I just want to make sure everybody pays attention to that and really looks into it, citywide. Thank you.
I have to agree with some of what Councilman Diviterio was saying about that. It is a major concern, not only the bars in the downtown area, but some of the bars in the neighborhoods and things of that nature as well. So, uh, it is a real major concern. All right. Resolution number two.
A resolution to approve annual alcohol renewals for twenty twenty-three, Casey Dagel.
Good evening. We've come before y'all this afternoon to get the annual renewals for twenty twenty-three for all approved alcohol vendors and permits. Nobody on this list is new. Everybody has come before the council previously and been approved, be it the this council or previous council, and it's just been approved by the council from year to year. Our tax, um, alcohol renewals are due on December first. The, not delinquent until January first of next year. But we try to get these out to everybody in November because of the notarizations that need to be happening and the paperwork that needs to be filled out and sent back into us.
Anyone from the public have a question to comment on this matter?
At every club, we're gonna have guns. At, uh, every club, we're gonna have fights. Every club, we're gonna have this. Every club, we're gonna have that. Because I was at a repast a couple of months ago, coming out. This, I'm a Christian, I'm a go to church. I went to the club. I come out, guy got a big old gun. You know what I did? I told the people who were with me, let's go. Because every place gonna have all these problems. Okay, if they want a club, they don't have a club. They have all this stuff going on in town. You don't hear about it. Fights. Police moves everywhere for the hots, for Ida. They sure was there. I walked around. I rode around. And I seen every police on every corner guarding everything. But guess what? When it come down to some things, we don't get things done. Just like today, I might be out of order right now, mayor. Who hired somebody to come on Norah Jane Drive, right in front of my property? Cut leaves down, got leaves out in front of my, uh, property? I paid to get that done, just paid somebody. So somebody, like I told the guy, y'all need to clean this mess up in front of my property. Okay? For is, they talking about free thing for is FEMA. I need FEMA to come clean that canal out. I've been fussing about the houses on East Mary with rats in it. And Bobby do his job, but like he tells me, he need, uh, money to get things done. It's an order you have to go by to get things done. So, just like when I had my car on my property, I had to take it from my property to this property to this. They put a sign on it because you, guess what? If you don't clean your property out, they're gonna tax you. You know, you gotta pay them for the, you know, on your taxes and stuff like that. You know, things got to get better here. We say this and we say that, but guess what? Get the job done and stop saying what you're gonna do. You ain't gonna do, do the job, okay? Don't do it for certain people. Do it for all people. All peoples are equal, not depends on what color it is. Like when they, like, like I said last year, when they, uh, people got, uh, the house messed up, water on Norah Jane Drive and different places. People got help. Some people didn't get no help. They got money. What they doing with the money? You using the money for your benefits or what? Thank you. And I need my, front of my house cleaned up. Because the guy said he was from Texas, a mayor, and they just own it for to come down here. And I need in front of my house clean, I mean, front of the land cleaned up. I got pictures in my phone. Thank you. Somebody gonna clean my property up. My property, front of my house, excuse me, if I'm out of order. Front of my house, I got the pictures where we can talk about it. They got leaves, they cut down the trees and I asked where it from. They said it from Texas. They cut the leaves down. But the water, y'all don't do the water, the water that had flowed. Now the water can build back up and stuff. I don't know where that coming from.
Any other questions, the concerns from anyone on the resolution number two? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion. Like, scared now. I make a motion, Mr. Casey.
Randy Wilson, uh, twenty-two hundred North Morrison Boulevard. I'm in Steve's district. Before we go off the subject of the club, I want to say, I gotta give credit to Steve. Thank you for taking the stance you do for that club. Especially being by the university, it's going to attract a lot of attention from younger folks. And that's the main body of the issues we see with people getting killed. I mean, it's true. We especially need more police presence in that area, especially being by the college. So there's a lot of stuff we need to take before you can consider that, um, that club being put there. So I really thank you for taking the stance y'all did. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
I second the motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Astain.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Astain.
Resolution number three. Thank you.
A resolution to authorize the Downtown Development District and its approved merchants to serve alcohol during the event starring November night, held on Saturday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, from eight AM to eight PM. The event is held within the boundaries of East and West Roberts Street, North and South Holly Street, East and West Coleman Street, and North and South Magnolia Street, Chelsea Tallow Little.
Um, so we, after some conversations with our merchants and kind of trying to experiment a little bit on what starring November, how it benefits our community, uh, we decided to move this event to a Saturday. Instead of a four-hour event, what was happening was, it's, it's a family event. So kids are coming from about five thirty to seven, and then the event lasts till ten. And there wasn't much activity for our merchants after that. So what we decided to do is move it to a Saturday, a full-day event. There's different things going on at, um, different sections of the event all day. But there is very minimal street closures. None of the parking malls will be closed for this. None of the parking malls will be closed for this, uh, which is, which is great because the Columbia has Jungle Book, um, showing that day too. But just trying to do something a little bit different, think it'll benefit our community better and be a little bit, um, easier to, to manage for, for us. So this is just coming to you guys, you, you approved it originally on Friday night, November eighteenth. So this is just to change the date to the Saturday, November nineteenth, and it, it should be twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. Any other questions, uh, from anyone in the public? Any other questions to comment from anyone on the council? If not, pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Resolution number four.
A resolution to grant a waiver of, of the City of Hammond's open container law to the Downtown Development District and its approved merchants during the event Starry Night, Novem, Starry November Night, held on Saturday, November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, from eight AM to eight PM. The event is held within the boundaries of East and West Robert Street, North and South Holly Street, East and West Coleman Street, and North and South Magnolia Street. Chelsea, tell a little.
It's the same event. We didn't change anything.
Anyone from the public? Questions to comment from anyone from the council? If not, pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
I just wanna invite you all to trick-or-treat on Thursday downtown, five-thirty to seven. Lieutenant Governor will be at Railroad Park at five o'clock to kind of give a recognition to downtown for our games-a-win and to kick off the event. And we've got fifty-three businesses participating, so it should be very good, a fun trick-or-treat.
That's, this, this Thursday, correct?
This Thursday.
And what was the time again?
Five-thirty to seven.
Thank you.
Also, Chelsea, I'm very happy to see the farmer's market go into Railroad Park. That, yeah, it's exciting. So I know that a lot of the merchants are happy about that, so good, good choice there. Yeah. Thank you.
Resolution number five.
A resolution approving Hammond North Shore Regional Airport, twenty-twenty-three, dash twenty-eight Capital Improvement Plan, SIP. Number two, requesting that the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development's Division of Aviation provide funds required to complete the airport improvements specifically described in the airport's SIP applications, agreeing to certain assurances related to the proceeding. And four, authorizing the mayor and Hammond City Council President to sign SIP documents. And five, authorizing the Hammond City clerk, council clerk to attest to these signatures. Charles Bauscher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
David is attending an airport conference, so I am filling in for him today. I know that's a lot in that agenda item. Hyperlinked to the agenda, and I think all of you should have received a copy of the CIP, um, a lot of this is the same projects that were approved last year. The biggest difference here is that you'll see that a lot of the projects have moved up, and that's because when we presented this to the council last year around this time, uh, we had not yet been alerted to the fact that the airport's gonna be receiving bipartisan infrastructure law funds, uh, to the tune of about eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars a year for the next two years guaranteed, possibly for up to the next five. So that has given us a tremendous opportunity to move projects that would typically take two, three, four years to, to plan, to fund, to implement, and move those up on the list. Um, we've been in conversations, David Laboue, our airport director, our airport consultant, myself, we've been in conversations with DOTD and FAA. They all really like this plan. Um, it's gonna make a lot of improvements to the airport, a lot of improvements that are, are needed and overdue. These are due to FAA by November one of each year, so we wanna make sure to get the council's approval so we can submit this. This is a plan, this is not necessarily everything that will be done in the absolute order it will be done, um, but this is letting DOTD and FAA and the general public, the council, know what our plans are moving forward. Uh, and the goal will be to try to accomplish as much on this, on this, uh, plan as possible.
Any questions to comment from anyone in the public? Any questions to comment from anyone on the council? Pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number six.
A resolution, one, accepting twenty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty-three-dollar grant from the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development's Division of Aviation for runway eighteen dash thirty-six rehabilitation, phase-two design, city project two-two-three-zero-one, at the Hammond North Shore Regional Airport. And two, authorizing the mayor or his designee to complete and sign related documents. Charles Bauscher.
So this is related to, um, what David presented to the council back on June twenty-eighth. Um, if you remember, at that time, we were presenting the FAA share of this project. So the FAA typically funds ninety percent of these projects. Our state kicks in a ten percent match. So we have now received the grant contract from the state for that ten percent match, ninety plus ten, a hundred percent, there's no cost to the city. So we're asking to, the, the council to approve that.
Alright, any questions to comment from anyone on the public on this resolution? Any questions to comment from anyone on the council? If not, pleasure the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Resolution number seven.
A resolution supporting the submission of a grant application for fifty thousand dollars to the Community Water Enrichment Fund for improvements to the city's water system. Charles Bauscher.
This is similar to, um, the Louisiana Government Assistance Program, a local government assistance program, LGAAP, which I presented to the council, I believe, two meetings ago. Um, along with LGAAP, we can apply for up to fifty thousand dollars under the Community Water Enrichment Fund for improvements to our water system. Um, when I was drafting this resolution, we were talking about a few different things with the Water and Sewer Department. Um, what Guy would like to do, he thinks with this fund, these funds, is install what are called insert-a-valves. These are valves which are inserted into water mains and allow us to actually shut the water off at that point, um, and they can actually do repairs in place, as opposed to shut off water to like the entire line and have all kinds of customers affected. You can actually specifically shut off points in the line, um, with these valves.
Does this require a match?
There is no match required.
Any other questions, comments on this matter? Questions, comment from anyone on the council?
Charles, how you doing?
I'm good, sir. How are you?
Good, good. Look, I heard you say about the cutoffs, uh, how many feet apart, where the cutoff's gonna be at and where the cutoff's gonna be located at?
He was looking at a list, he say he had about ten different locations in mind for these, if we're, these run about four to five thousand dollars, uh, each. Um, so if we get the full fifty thousand, we're looking at about ten. Um, he has not furnished me with that list, he was still trying to identify exactly where. He mentioned a few places on, in our phone conversation, I can't recall what those were. Um, but, um, the goal would be in those areas where we've had issues with water service or where we have new development. Um, I, I would imagine those are the areas that he's looking at.
Yeah, cuz I noticed, uh, like the fire hydrant, we been having fire hydrant in the area, and they constantly running, you know? I don't know if it's from the bottom or, or what, but they started leaking, and so, and that's why I was asking about this.
Are they leaking or are they, are they open?
They broke, they not, they not open, yeah.
Cuz I, I know periodically they will, they will use the fire hydrants to flush the lines, they'll open the hydrants to flush the lines. Um, if you have, um, locations where those could be taken a look at, um, you can get those to me, or it's a guy, or even our fire department.
Oh, no, yeah, I done talked to Guy about it already, but when you was talking about cutoff valves, you know, I think that's a good idea, but I, that's why I was asking what are locations are we talking about?
Unfortunately, I don't, I don't have those specific locations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of times, you know, when you come up here, I think it'd help me out and it'd help the constituents out, if Guy was up here to explain what was going on, because a lot of time we up here talking and, you know, now we about to vote on something and we really don't know what we voting on. I understand about cutoff valves, but, you know, where they gonna be at? You know, that's what I wanted to know.
I will say, in, in Guy's defense, um, I, I realized just last week that following the council meeting, last, last council meeting where there was discussion about when, if the council would meet in November, these applications are due November twenty-first. So if we don't, the council doesn't meet that, that, that second Tuesday in November because of the election, the twenty-second, which is that meeting of, of Thanksgiving week, would be too late. So this is our last opportunity really to present this to the council. I do apologize for not having more information. I was literally on the, on the phone with Guy, um, Friday, talking through some ideas, and this kinda came up. So I, he's still working on that list of locations, I'm sure if he had it, he would have sent it to me if I had this meeting.
Alright, thank you.
You know, the questions, the comments from anyone on the council? If not, pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Resolution number eight.
A resolution authorizing Lisa Coggramo, Hammond City Council Clerk, to certify authorized signatories and signatures for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, Local Government Assistance Program and Community Water Enrichment Fund. Charles Bauscher.
Both of these programs require us, when we receive the grants, to, to authorize signatories on our grant-related documents. Um, I like to do this early so that, you know, we don't, we have it when, when the grant documents come, we can just go ahead and, uh, put that, put together at that time. So this is just a housekeeping matter. Um, this would be for both the LGAAP application that was approved by the council a couple of meetings ago and for this application for CWF that was just approved.
Any questions from anyone in the public? Any questions to comment from anyone on the council? If not, pleasure the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Reports, Mayor.
Uh, last year, the police chief came up with the idea of having our first annual spokes and hopes bike drive for children, uh, in the, uh, city, uh, getting new bikes. Cypress Fitness teamed up with us and had all the bikes placed in one of their, in their basketball court. Um, if you know anyone, um, that, uh, the, the police department is reaching out to local groups to receive recommendations for those children in our area that would love to be a recipient of one of these bikes, if you know anyone, please get in touch with the police department. Last year, a hundred and fifty were given away, this year we're hoping that other businesses will get involved and, and, and donate more bikes and give more bikes to children in the community. Another form of, uh, community policing, along with a lot of the other things that's been done, uh, through the chief and the police department. So hats off to the police department.
Counsel reports. Anyone from the council?
Yeah, I got one thing, uh, I done received a text, I don't know what's going on, and I'm just gonna read the text, what it say. So Mayor Pete, are you going to advise the city council tonight on the serious allegation going on with your chief? They should know he is under investigation. Maybe this is one also get covered up. If you do nothing about the allegation, what kind of message does you send to all the female employees working for the city of Hammond?
First of all, if there's an investigation going on, you won't hear anything till it's over, but when it comes to sexual harassment or anything like that, if that's what being, is possibly being, uh, alleged, um, we support all females, and it's a serious situation if there is some such, uh, substance to it, but we'll have to wait and see what's going on with it, but, um, that's where we are at that point, at this point.
Lacy, can you check on, uh, the speed humps on, uh, Barnes, I think it was Barnes, I submitted a couple of weeks, I think last week, two weeks ago, something like that, yeah, just to check, see what the status is, I didn't get a response back, so I don't know if it's just in line or if there's something else.
You remember, did that petition list whose house it was gonna go in front of, or did you put that in the email?
No, I put the contact information for the lady who, uh, kinda.
That's who wants it in.
Well, she would be able to coordinate, uh, with the, uh, street on, uh, where's everybody happy with it at.
Um, I just, there's quite a few things going on in my district and citywide, so as we heard with Chelsea, Thursday night, DDD trick-or-treating, five-thirty to seven on Saturday, there's the Purple Run, which we heard about in Kate Square Park. Southeastern's also doing a trunk-or-treat on Saturday, um, around Friendship Circle, I think it starts at ten AM. Uh, Mayor, you didn't mention, but I have had questions, um, Halloween citywide trick-or-treating is Monday on Halloween from five to eight, right? And then I wanted to remind everybody that early voting has started, uh, through Tuesday at the registrar's office, um, on Club Deluxe, except for Sunday, so all week, through Tuesday except for Sunday. What's that?
Isn't there a ring also, the second?
Yeah, you go to Amy, sure, but I think it's at.
Courthouse.
It's at the courthouse, it's the registrar's office at the courthouse in Amy.
Not, not, not right now, no ma'am.
Steve, do you?
I'll just encourage everybody to get out and vote.
Alright, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.